Oh, perfect. Oh, yeah, yeah. And I'll read through it.
Yeah.
Be nice.
Yeah. If it's not a problem, then they do know that for a while, then they have all the perfect stuff. Yeah.
I think I know.
Yeah.
So you're gonna teach and check with your first steps. They tell the students.
Yes.
Uh, my mother's. Where's your check?
You know.
Yeah. And if you got.
That's a match.
I know that it's. I'm like, you're a little. I didn't do that. You did it more. Yeah. Yeah. Bottom of the school. Remember, you kind of.
My.
First, you actually. You're.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I don't understand. Really. Or. Yeah. First, uh, to the. Yeah. I don't. Get, get. Boy, definitely. And also, we're gonna do now. For. Or, you can.
How are you? Oh, you're pretty.
I think you said this. Yeah. So it's first case there. Before that.
Thank you. It's cool in here now. Yeah. I want to. But actually, it's. I can't do. I'm. This is a. I have tried. But we had a great. And. And. I know. We used to.
I haven't heard from the guys.
I know. I know. We need to. Cause I would want to. Kind of.
I remember. First.
Yeah. But they. They always. Yeah. I. I'm trying. Yeah. Really? Yeah. Yeah. So. Yeah. I'm. I'm trying to. Marketing. Oh, that's a. I love your photo. Just try to. Yeah. I don't. Oh, I love the older. He definitely. I only. As much as I can. So. I don't. So. Yeah. How like.
Certainly.
Sometimes that is more.
We're all.
Two. Yeah. And. Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Yeah. Yeah.
It is good.
Oh. Yeah. No. I appreciate. But you know. Actually.
Yeah. But.
Yeah.
Some.
Yeah.
It's up to you how old.
Oh, yeah. Okay. It's.
Me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I love this. Yeah. I thought three of us, but I think maybe. Kind of. I think. All be ready, right? I just. Well, the. Who's in the coffee shop? I was. Right. Right. That's right. I was kind of like. Yeah. 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 Yes. Welcome. To. Yes. To get how they started. Sammy. Other. Should I? Yeah. Hold them all. She's.
Um, so that's. Yeah. Yeah. So you could. Part is. You have. There has to be a queue. So we just have to run through your phone. For. The. You to send it. As. You. I don't know. How you. I mean, I just. I just. My phone. Uh, to. You. Send right from. The website.
I tried. So. It's.
You have a scan. If you're. Your phone. Can I call you? Good. And then.
My. One. I see. That one.
Although. Yeah. And it's not. But I like. There's some other type. So. Yeah.
Right. Yeah. This is what. We.
Yeah. Yeah. We're.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're in. Yeah. Let me know if you want us to look at that. If we don't.
I'm. Having. Oh, my.
Yeah. Probably. We can.
And. And. What is coming? See, and I say. Like. Yeah. No. Yeah. They just. She's. Yeah. Harp is. Mine. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
And all this.
Yeah. So.
Like.
Yeah.
Same.
No.
So after about a year. When we agree. Yeah.
And then you'll like. Yeah.
But I'll say.
How do you feel about this? I. Please.
I got the. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
Not. There. Probably.
So. It's. What about? Do you have? I said, but you don't. Right. I got the. I have. Yeah. Okay. Okay. It's only four on one yet. Our. We have. We're. We. Yeah. Yes. You lost. Uh. Oh. Sorry.
That's coming.
Hey, Dave. How are you? Your name's.
Yes.
I know. Here you are.
I would. Be careful.
Yeah. And you were ready.
Oh, I know. You're crazy. Yeah.
Is there. I'm.
I've heard. I've heard.
Is there. Video?
Oh, okay. All right. We'll call this work session of the Anchorage School Board to order. It's four oh one on August sixth, two thousand nineteen. Uh, we'll go around Alicia Hildy, uh, board member.
Dina Mitchell, board member.
Dave Donnelly, board member. Andy Holloman, board member.
Marco Bellamy, board member.
Dina Bishop and Superintendent Jim Anderson, CFO. Oh, and Star Marsette is on the phone. I spoke over her. I apologize.
Hey, Jim.
How good.
And Katie Grant. Um, okay. We're starting with the cost of education in Alaska presentation. Is that right? Are we going over that for a few?
Correct.
And how? How many minutes are we expecting to spend on this?
Um, Madam Chair, about fifteen minutes.
About fifteen minutes. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, so I'll start. Uh, Jim Anderson, CFO, is here accompanying me. And we're here, uh, just to basically, uh, share the information, uh, in the new light of the new work session. Uh, this was provided, um, too early and we're, we're here to answer questions. We'll just do the thirty thousand foot view. Um, I want to couch it in why, um, it was requested. So during the legislative session, uh, Jim really tackled the question of how the legislature had that fifty percent of, uh, Alaska's school districts, uh, spent on administration. And so we, we knew that to functionally not be correct. And, uh, so Jim took a deeper dive and, uh, at the federal level, using the census data, and found that, um, the, uh, different codes for the manner in which things are coded by the census at the federal level and coded by the state of Alaska, the chart of accounts, are quite different. And, and one of the primary things are, um, how we code, uh, instructional support. They code as administrative support. So, uh, any students that we have for instructional support through special education, TAs that work with children are not coded as such. So they're coded outside of the school. And so we found some glaring errors, or not glaring errors, so it's absolutely correct, just some glaring differences in the manner in which the data is reported and what they look at. So in light of that, um, at a finance meeting, uh, Jim, um, was requested further by, uh, Member, um, Mitchell to, can we look at Alaska's what would be the true cost then? And, um, really, it was about seventy hours, I think he told me, of work, because this isn't, uh, located in anyone's spot. He had to open up, um, each district's CAFR to find out the information. And to, um, start, I'll do the, um, just kind of initial idea, big things, and then Jim will get into the numbers. So, uh, big ideas, uh, if you've heard of REAAs, the Regional Education Attendance Areas, what you need to know is it's unincorporated. There's no tax base. That's the difference between boroughs and cities. But not every borough and city actually taxes. Some are too small. They don't have real property. Um, the next three pages, Jim's gonna just share the, um, information and just the ahas in comparison, so we can, uh, couch these in some understanding of Alaska.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. So really, I was just trying to provide some information to help familiarize, um, not just the board members, but the, the people you talked to with, um, why it's tough to say, we heard that Alaska as a whole is X. And so that must mean that Anchorage is the same way. Well, it certainly isn't. I mean, Alaska in this brief kind of lays out, um, how the different districts, um, size, how much funding they actually get per student. There's so many differences, um, and I didn't try to put all of the aha type things on this slide. As Dr. Bishop mentioned, there's, there's, uh, thirty-four cities and boroughs where they could tax. But of that thirty-four, there's only twenty-one that actually have bond debt. Um, so when you're looking at, you know, really more than half of the districts in the state, their buildings are built by the state, um, through state construction grants. The, the state owns them. Um, there's, there's a lot of differences. So when you try to say, okay, well, the impact on Anchorage, or really, when they talk about bond debt and cutting it at state level, it's really less than half of the state's districts are truly impacted by it. So when you look at, you know, the legislators that we talked to and, and, um, tried to, to provide information to, really, it's less than half of them. We're kind of focused on that as a big issue. So I put quite a few things on here and I, I certainly could talk about, um, any of them in depth if you have any questions.
And, uh, so we're finding out that not only is, um, Anchorage, uh, different than federal, we're also different than everyone in our state. We really are an outlier in the state of Alaska. And I believe that, um, some discussion by Member Donnelly in the past about, um, funding, cost of things, uh, has come up. And, um, so these are just some, some interesting things, but what, we want to know, well, where do we sit in the nation? And then where do we sit in the nation with our similar size?
So if there aren't any questions about Alaska, the next slide really was, look at, look at the nation as a whole. And so when you take Anchorage and compare it to the more than fourteen thousand school districts, um, you, you really kind of get a, a pretty good perspective when you look at the bottom center and see that, um, really, a, a fourth of the district, or a fourth of the districts in the nation are spending more money than what Anchorage spends every year. So you look at, you know, really, is Anchorage such a high cost for education? And, and the answer's really no. Um, but, you know, depending on who is collecting the data in Juno and what they want that data to show, it's, it's pretty easy to start rolling in Alaska as a state, or maybe even pick some of the, just the most expensive districts and use them as an example, and then try to make that appear as if it's all districts in Anchorage. But it, it's certainly not. This was actually pretty, pretty interesting. You look at the general admin cost, the vast majority of the nation has a higher general administration cost than Anchorage does per pupil. Um, and, and that includes the, the capital that, uh, major maintenance that we're doing. Um, really, Anchorage is not, um, the most expensive place to educate a child.
And so, um, we, how about we finish this and then go to questions? Okay. Cause we, we really want to stick with the outline and the direction that, um, our president gave us to just go through, share, and then let the board discuss. So, um, the next one, and just equal sized districts, um, if you, i- it's obvious. I mean, it's, uh, you can understand by economics that economy of scale supports, um, ASD, that if you have, um, more students, you know, you have more flexibility. Uh, and so our economy of scale provides for that. And so the next question was, well, what about, uh, people our same size? Or not people, but districts? So that's the next page, but you can take a look at that. Um, but getting into the comparisons of specifically, um, Alaska, in Jim's analysis, we had to equalize apples to apples. And that's the next page where it says Alaska's school district comparisons. You can take a look at what was removed because things that not all districts have had to be removed so that you can just look at the functions that are similar. So whether it's transportation, um, high rank of, if you have a lot of correspondence kids, you don't really have a lot of buildings, even though, um, and that might push it off. So those are the four items that are equalizers. Um, and then if you take a look at just the general revenue, uh, per pupil, um, and if you notice that the, I'll always take a look at, um, the qualifier that Jim put in, uh, state revenue excludes capital, bond debt, and transportation in order to normalize the data. So we're really being highly transparent about what is incorporated in that, what is not, specifically from the state. And as you can see, we are actually the lowest state contribution of all districts. Um, and the most expensive is fifty-two thousand, almost, um, fifty-three thousand dollars in a district of, um, Aleutian region has how many kids? Uh, not sure.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five children, um, in Aleutian region. And the state is providing alone, um, almost fifty-three thousand dollars per child. So you see that, um, Alaska's comparisons are quite different, but when you find the mean in Alaska of twenty-some odd thousand, that's, that's how it's created. Um, but then Jim added, um.
Federal.
Federal and state and local altogether. So what is the total amount in operations that we're actually receiving in operations outside of grants to educate children? And Anchorage is still the lowest. And then the others, uh, change a little bit. Um, but it's, it's interesting. Again, he removed the things that not all could be, um, compared with. And then, um, he took a look at districts' membership as well, and there might be some idiosyncrasies he could talk about there.
Sure. As, as you look at the districts, it's pretty interesting that some of them, even with, like Pribilov, with only sixty-six students, it's multiple schools. Um, so it, it's, uh, it's certainly difficult to try to do a raw comparison of one of our elementary schools to any other elementary school, um, because we're just that different. Really, the closest that compares to us is Fairbanks, um, cause Matsu's got smaller schools in general than we do.
And that's the economy of scale again, the, um, what he's referencing is the Matsu keeps our high schools at about twelve hundred and under, which maximizes the state revenue there, where we look for, we, we grow larger to put more operational and staffing in schools. So it's, it's just a different, um, philosophy of build. But even what Jim found out in comparing the big five, you've heard of that, um, he also found many other differences.
Right. Well, you know, it's interesting that the state talks about the big five, deed talks about the big five, as if we're all the same. And then you look at, at Juno, for example, they're one-tenth the size of ASD. Um, when you look at the special ed numbers, or I'm sorry, the, the ELL numbers, um, you'll see that actually Matsu has about the same percentage of ELL numbers that we have, but we have so many more languages, whereas Matsu is, is really Ukrainian Russian, is their, their largest number. I mean, this could have been like a whole thesis of differences, but, but that does give you an idea that even when you try to compare and you say, well, you know, Matsu's got a lot of ELL, what's great when you got one or two languages as your predominant ELL, you get to spend less resources on those one or two languages where, of course, we've, we've dozens.
Uh, and, uh, finally, the last comparison, you've, I've seen this before. We've done this for the board in many different areas, uh, when we provided budgets so that you, uh, and your peers of the big five, that the state references us, um, as more urban districts, that you can see specifically where we stand in those different categories. Uh, again, some of them, when we dug deeper, uh, such as operations, um, of the plant, um, some districts, uh, rely on outside people to, to do that. Student activities, if you notice, Juno, uh, has made a, a very concerted effort that a half, uh, half or maybe even three quarters of their travel is all supported by their community groups outside of the school. They continue to desire them to travel to Anchorage and other places, so they pay for those tickets and things. So Juno has, uh, quite an active community, uh, for sports that support that. Um, but then others are just, um, you could just take a look at those, uh, comparisons. Um, for community services and our schools being open, uh, we really do, uh, support that, but then we also receive revenue for that. So, uh, other school districts, um, they are, allow schools to be used only during, um, hours that staff is there and they won't hire additional for weekends unless somebody's already there. So that's why there might be some differences. It's the services that we offer. But you can dig into any of those. The next two pages are prior information that we've shared about just understanding with a mind's eye, how much really is that and how do we spend? And, and again, you will always see ASD, uh, is, is quite significant in instruction. We do put a lot towards the classroom, um, not only compared to our peers in Alaska, we've, um, provided evidence, but also to our like districts and peers around the nation. With that, I think we're good.
Good.
Um, yeah, I was just, uh, you know, your example about, um, teaching assistance falling under administrative in the state versus how we view it, it makes perfect sense to me. When you call, when you compare our numbers to other states, how do we know we're doing an honest comparison? How, I guess I'm asking, could we be making the same mistake when we're looking at other states and?
Well, there, there's certainly the risk if you take the US Census database and try to do, like, much more fidelity than what I provided, because there's some states where they pay very little state money and the schools really are supported by local money almost entirely. Um, you have, like, New York City doesn't have transportation because everyone uses public transit. So I was able to take out those known for some of the larger ones, um, on the forty thousand to sixty thousand, there were seventy thou- seventy-seven districts. I wasn't able to look at each of the seventy-seven districts and their budgets and CAFRs and look at their state formulas and locals, so I know that there's some variance. So I tried to use the broad categories that the US Census Bureau uses and then divide that by the number of students to get the per pupil cost instead of trying to provide any clearer fidelity.
Um, and, uh, to add to that, we found that several school districts, uh, are independent and so they can pass local referendums for operational funds. So, uh, they can go to their local, uh, community. And, um, if they say, we want, um, new computers in every school, it could be capital, um, like that applies, or they can say, we want, um, uh, five additional counselors in every school. They can go for a local referendum to, to get that done. So, um, those are just some of the things that we've found. And so that would technically be local money, but it's bonded and, but we, to true to, you know, going through here, we, we really did our due diligence in trying to only look at things that are mostly comparable. Um, Jim did take out mega districts, Los Angeles, New York, um, I think even Dallas and those that are over two hundred fifty thousand, we just excluded all of those because they're just out there. They're, I mean, the LA district is larger than the state of Alaska population, so, of students. So, um, we removed, uh, Jim did those, uh, crazy mega districts.
I, I very much appreciate this. It's really helpful and hopefully it'll be helpful in, at least, you know, providing some, um, good, um, apples-to-apples kind of data for our legislators and for the community groups. And I specifically, um, there was a community council who had said, you know, why is it that we spend the most per, per pupil of any place in the country and we get the least results? So I feel like this really addresses the, um, most per pupil piece of it. Um, and I know that we probably have some information I can loop back to them with on the results, cause that was the other half of their question. Um, I, I, I would love to, I don't know if it's possible, but see some of the, like the underlying data. Is that in any kind of a form that you could share with us?
I have multiple gigabytes of pivot tables and spreadsheets in the database.
Okay.
I mean, I can certainly share it, but.
But it's mainly.
It really is, as I, when you're looking at that kind of massive volume of data, you're, you really are doing pivot tables for those things that, that you choose to look at. But there isn't a program that says, hey, here's a bunch of data, tell me what it means. It really, it really is a, by thing, there was, I don't know, at least a hundred columns of data, um, and they all had codes. So you had to take the book and write the name and what it really meant on all of them to be able to even start looking at it. I mean, you could do it for months and months. It would be a handover research project. But if you wanted the pivot tables or the fifty gigs of data.
Well, I guess maybe just, so it's all based on the census? I mean, the, the.
No.
In-state? Are those?
Actually, I used the, for the state, what I used was the data that they use from CAFRs that turns into the report they sent to the US Census Bureau. And I intentionally used that data file. Um, one, because it's audited, all of them are CAFR certified. And two, that was the database that they took to turn it from state function into national functions for the Census Bureau. So I could follow Alaska all the way through to the US Census Bureau and then I could see where there was a number that looked really weird. And then I could pull ours up and try to figure out how it came up with that number to figure out which ones included capital and which ones didn't. And, and so that's kind of how I did it.
Yes. Um, and we can make a reference to these, but, um, what we wanted to present was something that somebody could trace back to a CAFER, because that's really important that it's transparent. Another argument we're making, I don't know, speaking of and the folks that they might be referencing, there is an article in EdWeek and they're doing a three series about how much each state spends on education in Alaska. Was number eight and then we moved to twelve. So, we still in the top quartile for that, but interestingly enough, they just did an equity report and Alaska received the last grade. It was a C minus for equity. And their explanation for equity was that urban school districts get less. It's so significantly less. Now, they didn't say that it's right that it's that way, but they said on their measurement for equity, large urban school districts in Alaska get less. And so, our argument to our legislature has been using these data as well as EdWeek's is that when we receive, especially with the bond debt they're taking away, when we receive other monies such as capital, that's a way for that equity balance for our taxpayers, that our taxpayers are kind of getting a different kind of quality in education by having support in their schools, which then we know now that's gone away too. But if we were to take away the prior bond debt, Jim's quoted as, you know, a good eighteen million. I mean, that's even, that's why we're saying it's kind of doubling down on districts that actually have the ability to tax themselves. We've done that with this guaran, you know, this, you know, agreement. And now twenty years later, we're saying, "Well, that agreement's going away" and then you can see the operational differences as well. So, that's why we feel as though it's a double down. And we're trying not to separate urban rural, but we're saying it's a really great deal to continue to pay our capital, to demonstrate to our community that you're also supporting through oil tax money, your largest district in the state. So, we're trying to really articulate the bond debt need for Anchorage, because there's, I believe Commonwealth North is looking at it, others are looking at it to have that go away. And our history demonstrates that when you have, you know, over ninety buildings, eighty-seven, ninety, ninety-four buildings, you can redo one roof a year and you're going to have a problem. Like, it's, we, our volume is so different than everyone else.
I just have one other question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't have questions, just a comment, but I would wait for your questions.
Well, I was just curious.
We'll take Tarrant and then the next person will have another.
Yes, Matt. So, I think this is great.
Thanks for doing this, because I think it's great and it goes very far. And we want things to be equal, but they're not equal. I mean, the equity piece for the Anchorage School District, I think any school district is going to, is huge, because those needs are there that you just don't, people don't get it. So, this helps us to explain to people exactly what we look like and what we do and what, and the impact. So, I find it very useful so that we don't have to, it just helps me, it's one of the things that I've wanted to provide as not necessarily talking points, but resources to the board. And if it's appropriate, please put it on Hot Topics, because we can send people there to get it as well. Thank you.
What was, what was the name of the organization that did that equity evaluation again?
Through the chair, it was EdWeek and I had, when I had emailed some legislators, like, we provided in the board connect at the time to the board to share the letter that I had written along with those. But I can get another copy for you.
Thank you.
There are a couple of other things that are somewhat relevant and that a lot of the functions we do, we already have the lowest admin percent of any other district in the state. We also have more functions, though. We're the only one that procures contracting for construction. So, you know, we're the only one with a procurement section where we're actually buying, for the most part, the bulk of the districts in the state, well, nearly every district, they get that through their city. So, we not only have the lowest in total percent of admin costs, but we also have additional functions that, because of their size, it would make no sense for them to stand up construction, contracting, and procurement and those kind of things. But we really are a one-stop shop at, really, you know, the discussions about, "Oh, we got to cut the bloated admin." And I know they're not talking about Dr. Bishop, it's probably me. I ate a lot this week in winter. But it really is, they, you know, those phrases come off their tongues really easily. But the reality is bang for the buck, Anchorage does more than any other district at a lower cost per pupil. And I think that's, that's the discussion point, that if we can get people to believe that, because these are not made up numbers, this is all audited data, I think that might go a long ways.
You know, I just had a, I was just curious, and we can talk about this offline too, but on the fiscal year seventeen, general fund revenue per pupil for Alaska districts, why did you pull the title funds out of that? I'm just curious what, do other districts not get that, or?
That's correct. We have districts, we have two districts in the state that receive no Title I money and other title funds that, I was trying to make it a clean comparison and not confuse that.
And through the chair, your title funds are based off of the student count and the student groups in those. And depending on your level of poverty or depending on the number of Indian ad, those change fluctuation according to how many students of that student group are in your district. So, those are moving targets every month, because we have students move in and out, similar to our free and reduced lunch. That is a monthly number that is calculated by federal law. So, it changes monthly. You turn that in monthly and that's why one month it could be forty-one percent, you know, free and reduced lunch, it could be forty-three for poverty's sake. So, those change quite often. So, they're, they're removed.
Do we, how do we track the number of kids that move to Anchorage? Like, once the year starts, do we, you know?
Can you turn that on?
We have a monthly enrollment count that we track all of the changes, but we don't track in a single database where they came from necessarily. But there's certainly a very real effect after the Oasis count, sometime after the end of October, where special education on an annual basis receives a big influx of people who send their students here in order to receive the services that they can't receive in their districts. So, we don't get additional funding for that, it just naturally occurs.
Yeah. Star, did you have any questions?
No, I just say, we spent a lot of hours, weekends, evenings, in putting this together and it is very much appreciated. And I want you to know that it will be helpful in our communications with the community and with legislators.
Okay, if anybody has later questions, you can always email them to the superintendent and she'll get it back to all of us, but we're going to-
May I just close with a statement just for member Bellamy? And she's absolutely correct that the state formula was never designed to be equal. So, we want that to be loud and clear, we understand that. It was designed for equity, not only in students and their student groups, but also in the different geographical areas in Alaska. So, we understand that, but this is to demonstrate the deltas between those. So, absolutely, the funding formula is designed appropriately for equity. I mean, it might not be appropriate, but it's purposeful.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, we'll go into Board Bylaw ninety-two seventy-one, Board Code of Conduct. Katie, we have a little extra time, we can go till five-thirty. Okay, so we're going to spend some good time on this. We'll go through each section and if there's either a question or even an awkward particular instance that you're concerned about, this is the time to have those awkward conversations. Okay, so, safe space, I don't, you know, it's going to be fine. We're going to work through it and figure out what we mean to be doing with this board bylaw. So, does everybody have a copy of ninety-two seventy-one in front of them? All right, is everybody using paper? I'll use paper if you're using paper. I don't know, I can say which page I'm on.
That's because I'm a writer.
You, are you an English person? I was wondering about that. Sorry, Katie did offer me a printed one earlier. Okay, we'll be on the first page. I'm not going to read anything to you all, but we'll just start with the first page. And if you have a part on this first page, either in the introduction or in number one, this would be an opportunity to speak of.
If anyone has anything to add to my view.
Okay. Star, I think I'll just give people about twenty seconds to look, just to jog their memories.
And I can certainly do that.
Okay. Okay, Star, what were you, were on the opening section or bullet point one?
It would be bullet point number four that I would start with.
Okay, we're going to, we'll go through it step by step, so when we get to four, I'll come back to you. All right, in the opening section, I just wanted to highlight, including in paragraph three, the Anchorage School Board adopts the following code of conduct to promote ethical business-like and lawful conduct, including appropriate use of authority and decorum while serving as an elected board member. Just that part on authority that we will keep in mind, what is the limit of our authority and that individually we're just our names. So, unless we have had a board meeting, I think, when in doubt, wait for a board meeting and let's talk to the board. Anybody else have a comment or concern on the opening paragraph or section one? Okay, bullet point two.
Well, I have to say on bullet point number two, I very much appreciate that member Bellamy always, when there's something coming up around UAA that she does disclose, that she works there as a professor or as an adjunct. And so, it's nice to have her, you know, just bring that up and have us be aware of that.
The goal here is that if we have any concerns, we're also really just going to talk about them. So, if you have a concern, this, it's okay to be specific and clear at this meeting. So, I have heard people say they would like member Donnelly to mention, just if he, something you think kind of Department of Administration, say, "This doesn't affect me," or "Does affect me," but, so that we don't get any mail, "Oh, there could be a conflict of interest." He already said, "No, I thought about it and this doesn't affect what I do." I don't know what you think about that.
I guess I don't fully understand the question, because to just offer a disclaimer every time for no particular reason doesn't really meet the code of ethics.
I agree, and I'm not suggesting that. And I know when you, I know you take a look at it, if there's an issue and you do that mentally already. So, I would just encourage anybody and not trying to single you out, I just know that specific thing has come up, say, "I already thought about this and this is what I thought about." If I have something that affects me, if I went to the step of thinking about it, let's just be preemptive and say, "Here was a thing and I, and I don't believe it applies to me." And how Dr. Bellamy does it, just so you know, I work at UAA, but I don't think this conflicts at all. And low stress, because when we get stuff out in the open, then it takes away that, what does it say? Perception of conflict of interest, and that's really the goal. Not that there is a conflict of interest, but it's the perception that is aboard. We want to, anytime we can prevent that, I don't want to call it noise, but that focus on something other than, right, what we're trying to accomplish here, I think that's in the best interest of kids. So, just as we support each other in doing that and then, I don't know, that would be my takeaway from that section. Anything on number two? Okay, section three or bullet point, I don't know, number three, I guess, page one. Okay, bullet point four, Star.
This one is, board members will take no individual action that could compromise the board, superintendent, ASD. So, I received something today that I have concern about and I'd like for us to address it. And it's an amendment, I'm reading the title of it, Amendment to Board Policy by Anchorage School Board Member Dave Donnelly, seven thirty-one, two thousand nineteen version, and it was sent directly to TOTM.
Okay, do you want, well, I, let's just, Dave, do you know what that is? No?
I believe Katie has copies of the emails that, you know, and I just would like clarification on this, because what I see here is that it was sent by Dave Donnelly directly to TOTM and I don't believe that other board members, I mean, nothing should be sent without other board members' approval or going before the board.
Sure. Okay, so, bullet point four says, "Board members will take no individual action that could compromise the board, superintendent, or ASD." And we talked about acting as an individual, but sometimes when things happen, we don't know the full story or the details or the understanding. So, the goal here is not to point out everything wrong anyone's done. Certainly, I have made mistakes on the code of conduct. We just want to clarify what our code of conduct is, what we, what actions follow that, what doesn't, and if there's specific instances, we'll just sort them out right now. Dave, did you have, do you, you know, I would assume that you thought it was fine, so I don't know what you-
Yeah, absolutely appropriate. TOTM contacted me, I'm not sure how many other board members they contacted about this, expressed concerns about a vote, the board, a change to policy that was adopted by the board in addressing when collective bargaining negotiations would begin. They pointed out multiple legal problems with the board's action in that it conflicted with Alaska law and also with collective bargaining agreements that are in existence right now. In response to that, I drafted a way that I thought might fix that. And as an individual board member, I said, sent that back to them and said, "Does this address your concerns?" I mean, that's certainly, I don't know what else we do here.
Well, I think everybody got that email, but when we're doing proposed policy changes, I think the issue is just pushing it through governance and making sure it sounds like it's coming through the board.
Well, let's back up a second. It was a draft, asking if it addressed their concerns. Why would I take it to governance before I even knew whether it addressed their concerns or not?
I, well, if somebody else wants to answer, I'm happy to answer, but I don't want to monopolize the conversation. Our, I mean, our practice is when we want to amend a policy that it happens through the committee process, not individual, so that it would be the Governance Committee reaching out to anybody who wanted to weigh in on a proposed policy revision and not just people affected directly by it, like a labor organization, but could just be the grandma down the street. You know, we want to make sure everybody has opportunities to be involved in the process.
So, are you saying that as individual members, we can't draft proposals to bring to the Governance Committee?
That you can do.
That's exactly what I was doing.
Okay, I think there was just concern of it going to individual community.
Yeah, because they're the people who raised the concern.
Yeah. So, I, so I think in the future, absolutely, you should draft, that's great and we need people doing the work, but just say, "I drafted one and I'm going to go through governance" and, you know, you could just tell them that, "Here's the procedure that we'll go through."
Sure.
And then, you know, we can always CC the president on things so that there's just less confusion about what's happening.
Well, I don't see there's any confusion here whatsoever.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, wait, Star. Go ahead, Dave.
I may disagree with that, because I didn't even know that you had proposed this to TOTM until TOTM sent me an email today saying that they had received this from you and that they were not in favor of this. And so, this was a surprise to me as board president. And I, you know, it says, "Amendment to Board Policy by Anchorage School Board Member Dave Donnelly," and this was done July thirty-first, two thousand nineteen version. And Dave, my concern is that any time, I don't think, we can propose board amendments, but we propose those in a committee where we can discuss them, because we don't know what we're putting in there. We haven't run it by ASD or anyone else to make sure that we're not putting something in there that would be detrimental.
Okay, so the goal of today isn't to hash out a specific instance and it later in our code of conduct-
Well, I'm going to-
No, one second, one second. We will get to it, but later in our code of conduct, we'll have other ways of how do we resolve when we have a concern with board members as well. But just to review that number four, is that what we're doing, we want to make sure we take time to reflect. Is this going to, does this look like I'm doing individual work or is this from the board? And when in doubt, wait for a board meeting, wait for a governance meeting and come back and say, "Is this what the board or the Governance Committee, the direction we want to go?"
No, I disagree with that completely.
Great. Well, Elisa went ahead and raised her hand, so we'll hear her talk.
I don't want to take this issue and completely beat it all the way down, but I guess I do have a question, though. You know, over my time on the board, whether it is an amendment to policy through governance or something that, you know, shows up on a regular board meeting agenda, we often find that it hasn't gotten out to everybody that it would possibly affect. And so, how do we do that as a board? How do we say, "This is going to affect, you know, X amount of, in this case, you know, union contracts," or whether it's the apprentice thing, it's all the different, you know, people that would come to the table to be a part of that conversation. How do we make sure that that happens? I don't know all the details, Dave. I am only looking at a very small snapshot here, but reaching out and saying, "Hey, this affects you and this is an issue that was brought up," you know, "And we're about to talk about it." That's one thing. Guiding it and saying, "Here, help me devise this policy" is a totally different thing. And so, without the whole picture, I want to be mindful of that, but it, that's a component of it, but I also want to know, how do we, if we have a proposed policy, get it out to everybody that it's going to be affected by? And I'm assuming best intentions, you know, how do we answer those questions?
And what does the board think? Because I believe that was the intent, right? You know, somebody's affected, they had a question, of course, you want to get them involved in the process.
Okay, I just want-
This isn't just, I'm not, I don't want to beat up on you for this, though.
Yeah, I just want to back up here.
This is just a process like she said.
I mean, we have a group that we have a collective bargaining agreement with, expressed to us that a policy that we changed directly violated state law, violated their collective bargaining agreement. They contacted us, they said, "Well, what do you suggest?" And they said, they seemed not to be able to come up with an answer to that. So, they said, "Well, we expected you to come up with something." So, I crafted something that I thought addressed their concern and sent it to them and said, "Does this address your concern?" That's all I did. I didn't make a commitment to introduce it, I didn't make a commitment that I didn't- I didn't make a commitment that I didn't say it was a policy of the board, you know, to do it in particular. All I was doing is trying to develop a potential amendment to address the concerns that were expressed, that were very serious concerns in that we were violating state law and we were violating a collective bargaining agreement that we were members of, that we had signed. And it wasn't getting done any other way, apparently. So, I offered to make a stab at it and if it, and see if it addressed their concern.
Well, what was your?
I just had, I had a response through the chair to Ms. Vekalas. So, as far as this, I had sent out an invitation to Sandy, the new president of TOTM, and told them that we were going to be discussing it. It's listed under new business for the governance committee, that policy. So, I did send them an invite to come to the governance committee meeting and let them know it was on new business.
And the, we brought the, I believe Star received the initial letter. We, you know, took it to our labor relations. We did come back, had it a thing that like, yes, we do need to address this. And that's why Series 4000 is being addressed and that's why they would have been invited. So, we, administration had clarified the question that the board had when they received the letter from TOTM. I believe Andy had scheduled, we were on the dock to have information for your 4000 series. And so, that's, but we found out about this today as well.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I sent out the invitation about just the general policy that they had requested the review, not this amendment.
So, the objective is going forward, oh, Ms. Vekalas?
I guess my only suggestion would be if we're sending it out to one bargaining unit, we send it to all of them since it's going to affect all of them and then it just takes away that perception.
Andy?
As the original maker of the amendment to policy that needs to be corrected, and it does, in fact, if in fact I had talked to TOTM at some length, this wouldn't be going on now. And I think there are times when we might have general conversations with people sort of vaguely in reference to policy and how we might change it. And there are other times, especially with bargaining units, where we might sit down and really be specific about language and things that need to happen. Unless there's a brown paper sack with a lot of $20 bills or something involved, I don't see anything underhanded happening. And I don't think Mr. Donley would settle for 20, so I'm not trying to suggest that at all. But I see interaction like this as normal action. That there may be times, and I don't know if including all bargaining units makes sense because their contract happens to mention specifically about when bargaining starts. I think there are times we will talk with people as board members about very specific changes. As long as we don't infer to them that we have some secret process or some, in some way, we're subverting it, eventually, it's going to come to governance. It's going to be clear where it came from, it's going to be clear of why, it's going to be clear who had an issue to begin with and what the cures are. We, that seems pretty normal to me. You know, one of the things I think a lot of people don't realize is as a board, we don't come together every day and work like a normal workforce. We go for weeks and don't talk about things and it all comes out at once. But a lot of us do a lot in the meantime. So, it, I, I don't see the foul here at all. And I see it as something I might do as a board member, or I think most people might do it as a board member. If they're talking with a specific group that has an issue. It might be about using our buildings after hours. It might be renting some other thing. It can come up and we want to start with them and get the details down because there is no point in engaging the board or a committee when we don't have a good solution to the original issue to begin with. So, again, as long as it's not misrepresented, that somehow a group has an inside track or we're going around something, I don't see it as a bad maneuver.
Anybody else that I want to keep moving on?
Moving forward, yeah, I just think that, as a newer person on the board and trying to establish boundaries, I try to be very careful in the conversations I have and promises that I make to people. And unfortunately, when we put stuff in writing, people take it as if that's the way it is. So, we just need to, whatever our process is, I think we need to function as a board as much as possible and not as individuals. That's the ethical and professional balance for me.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to keep going?
I just wanted to say one more.
I want to make a comment.
Go ahead, Star.
This is not necessarily, I mean, I use this as an example, David, and I apologize. But my concern is board members have different understanding of our code of ethics conduct. And therefore, if we're not all on the same page with the understanding of what we're asking of each board member, then it's going to be impossible to follow.
Absolutely, that's why we're going to keep going on to bullet point five.
I just want to say one more thing. If any of you saw the proposal that I sent back to them as something that might work to get their input and whether it would work, you'd notice that I tried to maintain as much of what we did as a board as possible and still stay within the statutory and collective bargaining language requirements. Because I had a great respect for the concerns that were raised and what was done at the time. So, I tried to preserve all, as much as possible of that and still stay within the parameters of the actual state law and the collective bargaining agreement.
And a lot of this practice will be clarified as we go through the code of conduct, so. All right, last bullet point on first page, and then we'll flip her over. Okay, I'm going to go six, seven, and eight, take a look, and if you have a concern. Anybody?
Where are we at?
Six, seven, and eight, page two. Andy?
Yeah, I do have a question, reference to number seven. Information that's discussed in executive session, if we are aware that it's known publicly, does that clear it to be discussed publicly by board members?
I would think not.
Say that again.
I would ask counsel to weigh in on this, but I believe if you received it and your information came from executive session and it wasn't publicly, I mean, it might be known because of rumor, but if you received it and it wasn't published and not foiled, being able to be foiled or whatever, I can't imagine that the discussion of that would be appropriate, but Matt can probably.
Well, and to be clear, on one instance, I do understand that details discussed in executive session that aren't public are not to be discussed. But if, if you're hearing information publicly that was also discussed in executive session, can you discuss that publicly known information?
I would request that we really get some information regarding to that. That's a very specific question to get specific answers. We could write that down and get that for you.
Great.
It just seems to me that information shared in executive session stays there.
If you're going to err on the side of something, err on.
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I don't know, maybe I'm just too restrictive in my processing, but.
Okay, that was six, seven, and eight, and then we're still on page two, we'll go nine, 10, 11. Then 12, sorry, I said 12. Oh, I did highlight this one. You know, we're supposed to hold each other accountable for this, so it's not, there's nobody else to do it.
I assume we can throw things at each other.
I mean, you know, so it's okay to talk about it and the code of conduct will give us some direction on how we talk about it. But it's okay to say, "What's happening there and I don't understand," and those things are fine. Okay, we'll do the next section on getting non-agenda items, request to administration. So, one and two. Any questions on one and two?
I'm just going to point out that I don't believe this happens all the time.
For what?
That request for information that's not readily available by ASD or of a confidential nature, that the request for information should go through the superintendent and board president.
Right, I think that's one we struggle with and maybe some confusion on. We just need to loop the president in, when in doubt, just CC Star on it.
Well, you said bring it up if we.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Is there a point in our process that we can make such requests? Or do we just do it haphazardly when it comes up?
The request would be anytime that you are looking for information that's not readily available or you're not sure if it's readily available by ASD staff or it's a confidential nature, then you would forward that request or send that request initially to the superintendent and board president. And the board president would rely on the superintendent to let us know or let me know if that is something that requires more time or information gathering.
Do what, sorry?
Just clarification, so the request goes to you and the superintendent or to you and you forward? Okay, to both of you?
No, to both of us.
And if it's a quick question, readily available, you're just asking you what about, you know, basically, if you could ask right before a meeting, I think it's kind of a good litmus test. That was confidential, okay. And then they share it back. Anybody else want to? Okay, number three, I think is of interest. Oh, I just wanted on one and two to mention, part of the thing to remember is that when we do just casually talk to people, I kind of like this thing. If it's an administrative person, let's say I want more information that's going to take time and then it ends up kind of not getting approved. That person kind of has to feel the weight of saying, "Oh, are they going to think that I said no?" Or it just puts people in a really uncomfortable position professionally when we don't, when they don't hear it from their boss and now they feel a little bit of tension that I would, you know, I think we strive to avoid.
Can I ask a question about this process?
The, what we're doing right now, go for it.
Yeah, we're going through this, but I really feel like we're going through it and we're just saying, "Yeah, I think that's something we're not new and we need to do." But there is no question of whether board members agree with it, disagree with it, if we need to look at it further, if they're in alignment with this, if there's a misunderstanding. And it might be something that we want to notate on there so that we can bring it up and further discussion.
Absolutely, and I'm sorry, I kind of thought that was assumed. But if you think, if you disagree with something, you know, then we can send it to governance or to relook at it anytime we're reviewing something if it's not what you think it should be. So, and certainly you too, Star, if there's something you think should be changed, please speak up. And again, if you don't get it at this one, you can still think about it, bring it up later, it's okay, too.
So, just to go back to item number 11, I'm just wondering if that is, "Board members will work to build a common vision and consensus among all community groups and organizations." Does that mean that we should actively be connecting with those groups? Which is, I think, my interpretation of part of a board member's duty? Or is it more reactive when we happen to be in that situation? I guess it, is this sort of a directive to board members to reach out to different groups?
But we do, we are assigned to certain groups.
And we are listed in our board policy as ambassadors for the school just public education, I think. I can't remember the exact wording.
So, it is meant to be more proactive?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think you have a gift for that, so. Okay, so number three on board.
Did you want to highlight that for further review?
Yeah.
Number 11.
So, maybe what we'll do, Andy, if it's okay with you, if there's a couple that people are concerned about, we can mark them here and then slate them over to governance when you have opportunity. Okay, number three on request administration on non-agenda items. This one I'll just read aloud. "If the requested information requires significant staff, time, or cost and the board member wishes to proceed, the request will be placed on the agenda as a request for information at the next regular board meeting and then determine the board's desire." So, we'll talk, oh, go ahead, Katie.
Oh, I was just going to point out that this was the practice when this was put together. But for the past few years, that request for information log has not continued to go forward. The official, there used to be a different agenda that ran all year that had requests for information that was brought forward at a work session for the board to kind of categorize and prioritize.
And why did it go away?
Just time changes and staff changes and the leadership changes on the board and, you know. Not one person said make it go away, it just kind of phased out.
So, this is our current policy, so we are required to do this. If we don't want to do it, then we need to change it. But until we change it, this is what we, this is what we are required to do. Go ahead, Dina.
And I feel like this is covered somewhere else, but should this be more explicit, too, that it should be a majority or it should be at least, I think right now, we basically say it should be at least three members? Maybe it should be a little more explicit as to what we mean about to determine the board's desire. What exactly does that mean?
Well, the board's desire is majority vote. So, right now, we've been doing, I mean, we've been kind of saying this thing, "Oh, we got about three people who are interested in that and maybe we need to be more explicit about it needs to be a board's desire to proceed with it." Now, I feel like there's a little bit of a gray area, so there's those little five-minute questions that you could just be like, "Hey, what do you know about that?" Okay, we all agree, that's fine. And then there's stuff, like I would take that 70-hour survey, like I think that would be an RFI. But there is stuff that's kind of in the middle and that's where I think we get a little fuzzy or like, maybe we just err on the side of it being an RFI? Or we change, just if people don't like it.
Either we follow it or we don't follow it.
Right, yeah, we need to follow it while it is the current policy, so absolutely. But, I don't know. So, I guess let's just err on the side of RFIs if you want to learn something that might take more time. And then just wait till the next board meeting. But remember, nine days in advance, right? So, you get it on there nine days in advance and then we talk about it and if it's fine, then we'll get the information. Okay? Any more questions on that one?
That one needs to go, and Andy's.
Yeah, I circled it here, I got two of them circled so far. Okay, at bottom of that page at the board, number four. All right, no questions, then next section, communication between the board and superintendent, number one. What's up?
It's, so we do a, this is, I can clarify, superintendent updated each meeting for information that, the items that I pick up from here are kind of what's new, what have I heard board members do, so I kind of elect to share if it's out there in the community. The second thing is board connect and that's really to communicate, and that's addressed here also, that if there's a citizen complaint or an email that goes to the board and we take care of it, I CC the, like, it'll be in there about this came in, this is what's happening. And, or if it's more timely, today I sent something out because the board received an email. So, I try to do that, depending on the timeliness of it, if it's just so that you have a reference of, okay, something was done, administration addressed it in case you're requested. And then, we also do, which went away, which was through the communications committee. That committee determined what was in those pamphlets that you would want to take to your community. And this last year, we got away from that. And my understanding is, is that what you, and that's this, like the supplemental information that is relevant to the community. The board also directed that for each month so that you can share with your community council and we would prepare that for you. So, there's different levels of information of whom the audience is, but they all are to basically get the board back timely information as much as possible.
Is, yes, your name?
One C, board agendas and support materials. Those we generally get from Katie, and they're board materials anyway, so I don't know that the onus should be on coming from the superintendent.
Just because it's, it's changed a little bit over time.
Yeah, so just something to circle and take back.
Okay, circling it for Andy. Anything else on that section?
Nope.
Okay. Next section is communication between the board and ASD staff. So that's got three bullet points.
I will say on, on one A, I find the language interesting where it says, "Avoid disclosing confidential information," it seems like that should just be, "Do not disclose confidential."
Yeah.
And similarly, disclosing information that is not publicly available to individuals with a need to know, I don't see that as our prerogative. So I, this is something we might want to circle and just clean up the language on a little bit.
Anything else on this section? Okay.
You know, I'm just passing over a lot of concerns here because they're so minor, and because all this is so subjective. Section B, listen politely and respectfully, but do not make promises about actions to be taken. Of course, we shouldn't ever make promises about the board taking an action, but if an individual promises, I will bring this up with, with somebody, there's nothing wrong with that. So it's, it's really poorly written, it's, just begs to be problematic. And there may be times where somebody may bring you something that you think it's inappropriate to talk about, so if it's inappropriate, I'm not going to listen, if it's, if it's a problem actually to listen to them about something. And generally, sure, listen politely and be respectfully, but there, there's exceptions to every one of these things in here that can be problematic.
And I think as general, this is our guiding one, and we try to comply with it. When there's a concern, this gives us a mechanism to talk about, is this, you know, what Dave was talking about where it's not really a big deal, you know, and, you know, the point is it gives us a framework into our best ability to comply with this. Okay, communication between the board and community? Dave?
I have an ongoing concern about item number four. I believe on its face it violates the First Amendment of the United States Constitution's freedom of speech, and it's pretty clear from US Supreme Court decisions that these kinds of provisions are chilling of freedom of speech, and as such, there has to be a compelling governmental interest to legitimize even their consideration, and they follow under strict scrutiny also, so that they are, can only be enacted even if there is a compelling interest in the least invasive way, as to protect to the maximum possible freedom of speech. And to require people to provide a summation of every phone conversation they've ever had with anybody in the public that might deal with the school board is just way over the top. It doesn't pass the first test, and that is, it is actually absolutely essential, doesn't pass the second test, it's the least invasive way of requiring whatever the goal here. The goal is not even articulated in this statement, and you can't pass a law like this, or put a provision like this without clearly articulating what your attempted goal is and why it's necessary. So on all elements of freedom of speech tests, this fails.
And I put a big circle around it for the same reasons Dave articulated, so we'll just send it over to Andy. Thank you. Anything else in this section?
Is that, I just have a question in the practical sense of that, you know, I know probably. I think it's, is it like a subsection of number three? When the board as a total is given a concern, and someone responds, is it just letting, like, Katie know that someone responded?
It's, that's in the email protocol.
Oh, okay.
Some of this feels like it's like old time, like.
Redundant.
Like, before people just use email exclusively, so I don't know, but.
It just seems like we added stuff over time.
Yeah.
To address certain issues.
I don't know that we need a giant revamp of the code of conduct, that would, I don't know that that is useful, but these few that we highlighted, take a look and see if there's a, you know.
I would just like to say it's practical when, say, Andy has responded to someone, I know, okay, I don't need to do that, or someone else has.
And it's explicit in the email protocol.
It's just, okay, okay. That way we just have the wherewithal about what we need to do or not.
Absolutely, so that's, so we are going to get to that, because I think that's a practical use. Okay, board member responses to complaints. This directs us to ask a complaint if they follow the procedures or chain of command per the board policy, so would be worth reviewing that just individually, and then just let the superintendent know. Citizen complaint procedure, I don't know what that is.
It's a board policy that's very formalized response to.
Oh, I've read that one before, yeah, I've read that one before.
I'd love to get it online.
Yeah, that would be good, and then direct people.
Like a fill-in, and just email it.
Okay, board member school visits. Okay, email protocol. All right, this one I think deserves a little extra time, as Star has mentioned as well. So right now we get individual board emails, and sometimes the people will just write all seven names down, which is really an email to the full board, but I think in practice, if they send it individually, I read it as an individual. I don't know what you guys think of that, but that determines, but if it's sent just to the board and you answer it, then it says, "Copy the board president, superintendent, and Katie." So if you respond to something that says, "schoolboard@asdkt12.org," just copy them on it, or blind CC is.
And those are the ones that you tap on a lot.
In practice, if it's all seven of us, it's really they're emailing the full board, and I think that would be appropriate to do the same practice. Any questions or concerns?
I do have one.
Go ahead, Star.
On the first there, it says, "The board president will answer or route emails received by the board to the superintendent and individual board members for response, or may designate the school board secretary to do this on his or her behalf." So if it does so to individual board members, yes, of course, they need to respond, but if it's a email to a, to board as a whole, unless we want to change that, it very much says the president will answer or route emails.
So are you saying that you don't want, like, if I get a school board general email, you don't, you just want to answer those all yourself?
I'm saying that the way it's written here, that's what it says. If we want to change that, then we need to look at it.
Sure, I hear what you're saying. What do you think, Elisa?
I don't read it that way.
Yeah, I didn't quite read it that way. It says choose to answer, so.
Go to B.
Yeah, B says choose to answer, so any email to the school board, you have to, but we can choose to.
Well, I, so we need to clarify that, because I think that says two different things than I just think it needs to be.
Okay, fair enough, I'll.
Yeah, yeah. However, however way we do it, I don't care, but we just need to make it one or the other.
And then I assume governance will give us a, in the report, will get all the answers to these, and we'll all be on the same page.
Before we do this section.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would like the governance committee to also review email protocol one B also.
A and B.
Yeah, I did A and B, is that right, Dave?
Yes.
A and B, that's what I, that's what I did, okay. Flipping over, we're still on this email section. Next section, meeting procedures, preparation of the agenda. So I just, we'll jump down to number two since we're going low on time, this is the one that came up before. So it says, "Two or more board members concur, you can get on the agenda, but it has to be nine days in advance."
But it's also, there's not clarification, it says, the first one says, "The creation of board meeting agenda," okay, "Any board member may make a request to the board president that is subject to be included on the agenda for a meeting."
Right, so you can add it, yeah.
If two or more board members concur, that request will be forwarded in writing to the board president. So there's, that's a little hard to do, how do you get two or more board members to occur if you are doing this outside of the meeting? So that needs to be looked at.
Okay, I understood it as like, if I'm just talking to Dean, and we're like, let's get this on the agenda, we're just going to email you, and if it's not nine business days before, then it would just go on the next agenda. So that's my understanding of it.
Okay, so just that you spoke with Dina, and because it says, if, to, okay, concur, if two or board members concur with the, does that mean any board member making the request has to have two or more board members to occur with that request, or does that include both of them?
The two board members are making the request.
Yeah, I, I think it needs to be clarified.
Okay, I circled it, but, but just in practice, the nine days, in writing, double-check here, and, and this will help our agenda building process be a lot.
Right.
Less stressful.
Can I just loop back to the last section?
Sure.
Sorry, I was just processing this. So we say in email protocol one B, that responses to emails which board members choose to answer will be copied to the board president, superintendent, and board secretary, but then we say that if they reply as an individual, they may choose to share the emails. So it feels like four and one are kind of in, I think they just need to be, if in fact board members, if they're responding as an individual and not as a board member, can respond and aren't required to copy those people, I think that should be listed, I think it just should be clarified in governance, it should be.
Thank you.
It should be made clear.
Okay, so meeting procedures, preparation of the agenda. In bullet point three, it says, "No item on the agenda less than nine business days prior to regular board meeting unless it seriously affect the operation of the district." Then no item should ever be placed on the board meeting agenda less than 72 hours in advance of the meeting unless emergencies. What, what do you guys think about that one? So, so this is like, the only person who would be able to do it less than nine days would be the board president, I guess, because otherwise you still can make a motion to amend the agenda the day of, but in practice, we want to avoid that because we want the nine days in advance is for public to be aware of it, yeah, public notice.
I mean, you could say no action item if it's something you want to clarify that way.
That's a good idea.
You know, because that really is kind of the issue is, you know, when the public really, you know, has that voice and input.
Sure.
But.
Okay, we'll circle it through an action. Just clarifying that, what we want, and just, so everybody's on the same page on how we build our agenda. Everything else.
These are no longer on the consent agenda, those are just little, just things that I can.
Well, this is may include, so it doesn't have to be changed. Okay, board member preparation for meetings. I just want to highlight number three, we'll, so we get our board packet a week before, and then we submit requests for additional information or questions about the board meeting items to the superintendent, no less than four business days prior to the regular board meeting. I don't think that, I don't do that, so sorry, but you should. Is that, is that something people are understanding, this, this little bullet point? Dave?
I think this is another good example of a guideline, a goal, but, I mean, how would, you know, as you sit there as a board member, listening to public comment, and your fellow members debate on a subject, you may think of something you didn't ask or even know to ask before. So should you be precluded from asking that at that point?
No.
Obviously not, but as a goal, I think this is a very, you know, reasonable thing.
Elisa?
So maybe board members will endeavor to submit requests.
Sure, I'll just circle it for Andy to talk about, but right now, you know, let's email our questions ahead of time so nobody's caught off guard, and I don't think that's our practice at all right now, so that will take a little bit of, you know, take a little, yeah, changing our practice and just being more aware of it, and then saying, hey, how are we doing on that? And everybody can help with that. And then it says, "The superintendent will respond to board member questions no less than two days prior to the board meeting."
Just so you know, what we've done with practice on board members will submit requests for additional information, if something is an item on the agenda, and this is how we've been operating, and board members have wanted more information, but if it's already on the agenda item, we've done it where I was CC'd, and you can, like, if it's something about capital construction, you know, Tom prepared it, you can see, you know, right on there. Generally, what, what we do is, board members have, you know, put me in the email and the employee who prepared that, and just so you know, when, when that doesn't happen, the employees know to give it to me, like, to let me see what the questions are, because part of this is that the questions that you might have, other board members might have, so then we get that information and we republish to everyone. That's why a lot of times you'll say, a board member in the board connect, a board member asked about blank, we don't really say the board member, but what we do is say, this is the information so that, because part of your code of conduct is that what one board member gets, they all get, so if it's not an odd question, but it's something that's pretty important that a board member picked up on, we want to be sure to get it back to everybody. So that's what, to keep up with the former thing that says all board members will get questions answered of board members, that's what we try to do, so.
So I just want to make sure you're okay with it happening that way, because I think in here it says that we ask you and not the department heads. So are you okay with us asking them and copying you, or would you prefer us to just ask you?
I mean, I'm just saying, what we've been doing is, if it is published on the agenda, and it's a public document, and the person's name of whose, it's dual, but, I mean, it doesn't mean that, there's many times where board members go directly to staff, not even about board items, so that, it's not that it doesn't happen, it does, and we just try to just govern each other and just politely say, you know, be sure, this has, your request has to go through the board president, and then to me, but on things that are already on the board, that are prepared, that you have questions, generally, we try to get those questions answered beforehand, and for process reasons, we go, you know, and then, then we'll, then we'll discuss, oh yeah, that is something that everybody, it's not just this, you know, particular question that really isn't relevant, that there might be, because some questions are, hey, I was just wondering who's that, you know, that's not something, but, that big of a deal, but if it's where you would actually need that information, everybody should have it to make an informed decision, we really try to get it back to the entire board. That's our goal.
Okay, thank you. Given the time, the next three sections I'm going to skip, I'm thankful for all of your good behavior during board meetings, and that nobody does crazy antics, so happy to skip that section. We'll jump down to board member concerns about superintendent performance, skipping three This says. This says basically, if you have a concern about the superintendent's performance, you go first to the board president. I would just encourage you to just check, you know, because we're not going to memorize this. So just look it up when you are concerned. So, I'm not going to spend time on this, because I want to keep going, but if it came up, you know it's here, and you know where to reference it. ASD member concerns about, no, board member concerns about ASD employee performance. It says, "Bring it to the superintendent and inform the board president." So I'll say, I sent Dr. Bishop one one time, and I should have CC'd Star on it, right? I didn't do that, so in the future, like if you have a concern about that, make sure you follow that practice. Anybody else have a concern or question on that section? Next one, board member concerns about board member conduct. This is our self, I don't know what the word is called, self-regulation? I don't know.
Accountability?
Yeah. So I just want you to jump down to three. This tells you the steps. So first off is like kindergarten rules, talk to the person, right? You know, "Hey, I'm concerned about what's happening here, I don't understand the step, let's figure it out." Then you send it to Star in writing, and then you follow that process. But remembering that there is a process. And we have four minutes, so if you have any, you want to take time on that one, you're welcome to look at it. So for this, we're referring these highlighted sections to Andy, I'll give you my copy. And I don't think there's a pressing timeline on it, so just from, what do you guys, this semester sometime?
I think, I think there's a timeline on this. I think this is important enough, if we're, if this is our code of conduct and we're going to follow it, we need to make sure that all board members, and they may not all be in agreement, but we need to make sure that this is, all board members have a good understanding.
Okay, what's your timeline request, Star?
Well, I think that it might even have to be a separate meeting to discuss this. That's what we did before when we flagged this together, is we actually had to have, because this is going to take a lot of time, and it did before.
Alisa? Do you see how I call on you without you raising your hand, because I can tell you want to type?
Yeah, so this document took probably six months and a lot of heartburn to create, and it was a document that was born in a very different time, with different people at the table, different leadership, different administration, and a very different culture. And so I can see some probably good tweaks to this, that best practices, you know, are different than what is said here. And so I think I agree with Star, that I would encourage another work session where we can just sit down, we have the points that we want to talk about, go through them, clarify them, but then it's something, a document that we can all live by and hold each other accountable for in today's environment, not something that was done three years ago in a very different situation.
Are you okay with governance doing it, though?
Governance or a work session, but as long as we all commit to be there.
Okay, Andy?
And I would suggest one way, we find a way that staff doesn't have to sit and endure it.
Yeah, I feel bad. But they can hold us accountable now, too. So the plan is for governance to pick a time to put this on, whether you do it during your meeting or not, within the next, you know, it's going to be a busy start of the year, so I'll defer to you, but, and then we will strive to all attend.
It won't be while still, they're still running.
Absolutely not, yeah. Okay, so refer to governance. Okay, and then we have new business. So these are the resolutions, the AASB resolutions that came from AASB, is that correct? So we have to vote on these by October 8th, or, so Deana Mitchell, can you just explain to the board what this, why they need the resolutions, and what's for it? Dave, sorry?
What's the significance of the yellow highlighting?
I, I just printed those documents that came from AASB. So that's how they were sent to me.
So we don't know. Okay, Deana, do you want to say what, what you do with these?
So, as you all know, at the annual, well, Margot may not, at the annual meeting of the Alaska Association of School Boards, they have a session on the resolutions, and there are resolutions that are sunsetting, and the decision is made on whether to extend those or not. And the new resolutions that have been proposed, according to the timeline of this process, are then also voted on. So the timeline is built toward that annual meeting in November.
So these are the ones, they want to know, when Star and Deana go, does the Anchorage School Board support these resolutions? Do we have any new resolutions, or any modifications? Oh, we did? You did, great.
So I think I would just like to remind board members that there is a date on this, and a lot of things, you know, if we want to propose a new resolution, we need to get that before the board, before October 8th, and vote on it.
Okay, and Dr. Melonby said she's got it on her agenda. Your next one? Okay, so you'd have to really have it ready, so that you can get it to the full board. So if you have something you want to do, you need to have it ready for her meeting.
And just, if I may, I just want to, I think this policy has already been passed, or correct me if I'm wrong, but the Alaska Association of School Boards has made a change to the policy that nothing can be brought to the floor during the resolution committee unless the person who's bringing it up, they have the, that it's been approved by their entire board, so.
Okay, awesome. Any other new business?
I've never finished my doctorate.
Oh!
So there is, I do have one thing, and the board has said they would, at the first work session, talk about what they wanted their first professional development to be.
Yeah, so what do you guys want?
So we had said, "Open Meeting Act", and maybe financial fiduciary responsibilities of the board.
Well, there's...
There's training.
We've been invited to go to the APC train, yeah.
So that covers Open Meetings Act, for anybody who wants refresher on that. Is there other board professional development you want for this quarter? I think we were saying in September?
Right.
I thought that, and we were going to check dates, on which dates you might be available. We could decide in September what the topic is, but we do need to get it scheduled.
Well, and we need to know before that, because if we have to have somebody scheduled to come in and do it, we've got to check their availability.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, so, check your schedule.
Getting some training on Open Meetings Act, but I think Andy's question is pretty compelling. Do you want to drill down more into like an executive session and information? Like when is information publicly known and not publicly? I mean, you know, whether it's, you know, someone can tell someone else about an issue, and then somebody's talking about it, it doesn't make it okay that, if you heard that, but, but there is a time in the public that things are public, so when, when is that cut off? I mean, that's an interesting...
So more detailed Open Meetings Act?
You know, I mean, you could request the types of specific questions in that from, when is that Open Meetings Act? Maybe you can do Open Meetings Act more detail or something, I don't know, if you wanted to, but, you know, because executive sessions are private, and then, not supposed to talk, but, I'm believing that if you're saying when things then do become public, what does the, I mean, just none of the detail would be, obviously, but, yeah, I'm just, to clarify. That might be something that you'd want, since he mentioned it.
I would, either as a specific question or a general discussion. Yeah, there are times, I mean, if you're reading something in the newspaper, and it also is something you heard in executive session, and somebody talks to you about it, do you have to pretend you don't know anything about it? I don't think that's true. But obviously, you can't say, "Well, not only is this in the newspaper, but let me tell you some other stuff", you can't go there. But somewhere, there's a line, and I don't know exactly where that line is. The other thing that could tag into that also is when we are in bargaining with one of our units, there are laws that apply to board members about who they can speak with and the nature of their conversations relative to people in that bargaining unit or people on the bargaining team. And I wouldn't mind a rundown by someone with legal knowledge about what those boundaries are, and who, there are specific entities recognized by labor law and board members of bargaining units are one of them. So yeah, I wouldn't mind being made aware of what I might be about to do wrong.
Star, would you like people to email you their request? Are you there?
I said, "That would be wonderful, as long as they will do it."
Yeah, well, let's say, email the request within, like by tomorrow, right? Because she needs to get it planned, and, you know...
Well, it doesn't have to be by tomorrow, but at least before the next board meeting.
Yeah, that's very generous. Okay, so now, this meeting's over, and now we have to open a meeting, and then go to the next session?
It's actually a separate, separate agenda, so you'll have to do a...
In there?
In there.
Got it. Okay, well, this is over, thanks, guys.
We got to work on, we got to work on that also.
This is over. Star, I'll call you back from room 150. We got it. Okay, food arrived. This would be quick if everybody gets in there, or would you rather get your food in there? This is just a reminder of an email that I sent you, a question for the panel, so I just turned it in here as a reminder.
Am I just calling Star directly over there? Can you shoot me her phone number that she wants me to call?
Yes.
That'd be great.